Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, May 28th, 2024 Workshop Meeting. Uh, this will start off with the fiscal year 2425 budget presentation by City Manager Jessica Con.
Good morning. Don't have to bear with me today. I have a little bit of a cold, but hopefully we can get through it. All right. Need a clicker. Maybe we'll. Okay, so just like with any other year, we started our budgeting process back in December. Um, with Angela and Miss Mayne and Gilbert being able to meet with department directors, meet with HR and IT in regards to capital requests, personnel requests. And we think we have all of them pretty well lined up in accordance with the goals that we set in January and our areas of importance for this calendar year. So with that, just a reminder of what they are. Okay, so our goals and areas of importance are fiscal responsibility, workforce development, communication, both internal and external, and enhancing the quality of life for our citizens. Our revenues this year, our overall expenditures exceed revenues by five million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-two. In fiscal year 24, our overall expenditures exceeded revenues by eight million, one hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five. I'm not gonna do this all day. This clicker. Guys. Okay. Our general fund expenditures exceed revenues by eleven million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. In fiscal year 2024, it was almost the same, but general fund expenditures exceeded revenues by eleven million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Our total general fund revenue is up this year without transfers over a million dollars, but one million, six thousand, seventy-six. And in fiscal year 24, that number was at eighty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-three. Our property tax for fiscal year 25 is budgeted at four point six million. In fiscal year 24, we budgeted property tax at four million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, eighty-five dollars. So far, our total general fund revenue at seventy-five percent of the year is at eighty point zero three percent. At the same time in fiscal year 23, our general fund revenue was already at eighty-four point zero nine percent. So this year, our real and personal property tax that we're budgeting is decreasing twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Our motor vehicle tax and our TAVT tax has continued to decrease. We're budgeting a decrease of thirty-one thousand, ninety. However, our loss budget has increased by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And our licenses and our occupational tax certificates are also budgeted at an increase of forty-four thousand. So property tax year-to-date at seventy-five percent of the year is four million, three hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And FY23, at the end of that year, our actual collections were four million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, thirty-one dollars. And in FY22, our actual collections were four million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, nine dollars. So as you can see, we're staying right around four point one to four point six million dollars in property tax collected. Our TAVT projection is down to seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, fiscal year 23 total, we were able to accumulate seven hundred and forty thousand, ninety dollars. And year-to-date, though, for this fiscal year, we're at five hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three, which is seventy-two point three eight percent of collections at seventy-five percent of the year. So that is why we are budgeting a decrease in TAVT this year. Our loss projection, though, is at five point five five million, so up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the five point three we prepared last year. At seventy-five percent of the year, we are eighty point two three percent of collection, which is four million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, sixty-four dollars. And FY23, our total collective was five million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen. So we think a five point five number is very reasonable for our loss collections this year. Our enterprise funds revenues, our solid waste revenue has increased projections by six hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. Electric has increased two million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Waste water is a slight increase of forty thousand, eight oh three, and water is a slight increase of forty-two thousand, six ninety-eight. This year, our stormwater revenue is projected to decrease at sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight. Our telecom fund is expected to increase in a hundred and twenty thousand, twenty dollars. And our golf course is expected to increase revenues by one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five. Again, all of these are based on operating revenues at seventy-five percent of the year. So solid waste at this time is at seventy-six point five three percent of their revenue. Electric is at seventy-five point four four. Water and wastewater combined is at seventy-six point zero five. Stormwater is a little behind at seventy-three point one two at seventy-five percent of the year. Telecom is at seventy-six point zero nine, and the golf course this year is already over a hundred percent of what we budgeted in last year at one oh two point six six. The total budget for all of our funds revenues are projected to be up by two million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four, which is a one point six five percent increase from the original projection of last fiscal year. The projected operating expenses are down at a hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine, so almost flat when you're looking at a hundred and forty-six million dollar budget. Totally have a difference of a hundred and seventy-six thousand from our original projection. So in numbers, our total revenue fiscal year 25 is a hundred and forty-six million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-eight. Our total expense is a hundred and fifty-one million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. When you take out depreciation, that net is a hundred and forty-four million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty. Some of our expense highlights, we always start with our capital requests, which this year are down four point five million dollars. So total capital requests are nine million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight compared to last year at fourteen, fourteen point five million. The sort of highlights of those are our CDVG infrastructure at one million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-five. Teeth loss, we have budgeted again at three million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. We have ten patrol vehicles at sixty-one thousand a piece, so six hundred and ten thousand total. We need to repay fire station number three, which we have budgeted at one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then some of our electric stuff that we always budgeted, our line maintenance and improvements at four hundred thousand. Our new customer construction at three hundred thousand, our streetlight LED conversion at two hundred thousand, and the expansion of our fiber network for another hundred thousand this year. Also, our general fund capital totals, one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars compared to fiscal year 24 at one million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Another big highlight we always want to show is our personnel. Again, this year, we are still doing our pay-for-performance merit-based raises. Right now, we have two percent budgeted for each department. If you'll remember, though, that it's not spread across the board. It is based on your scores, on your evaluations. So two percent is sort of a placeholder, and then we will see what those scores look like and see who gets raises based on their evaluations by June 30th. We also are not passing along the insurance increase that the city is going to absorb. So we do have an increase of forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars in medical and an increase of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars in dental. Even with swapping providers, that was still the increase that we are going to have to absorb, but the city is going to do that and not pass along that cost to the employees. Yes, ma'am.
Personnel is spending free budget. But, and I know it's pay-per-perform.
Yes, ma'am.
But does that not mean that everybody who can?
They have a one, which is the needs improvement, they will not get a raise, they're not eligible. However, in my executive summary, I have mentioned to you all that we do not have budgeted inherent actual pay study raise. We're going to have to. So I'll be coming back in September when we look at the military, because we're now below the county. Um, so that will have to be adjusted. Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me what percentage of our personnel actually did not get?
Maybe, maybe ten percent at most. Yeah, about ten, about forty, don't get a raise. Well, that are eligible, because you also, if you're on probation, you're not eligible for a raise. You have to finish that first year. So we have some that don't get it for that reason, but then some that need improvement, and so they don't get a raise. If their evaluation shows that. But there's, there's, there's a very few that don't get it because of that reason.
One other question I need to talk about.
No, there you go.
Of the ones that need improvement, are those employees continuously not getting a raise because they need improvement, or is it different?
I, I can only speak for the ones that I know and that I evaluate, and I will say that those that didn't get a raise last year will get a raise this year because they learned what they needed to, to work on. And I think that that's pretty consistent across the board. They're not getting, if they get an evaluation that says they need improvement, they know it's coming. They've been talked to, they know what they need to improve. And I do think that sometimes, once they see that they're really not going to get a raise, it does change that, but I'd have to specifically ask directors and said, is that working? I know that I don't see the same names on the lists every year that don't get them, so my assumption is that it does work. Right.
The average amount of people that need to be. I'm, I'm just curious, though. Is it how the various employees, or there's some older life, ten years, fifteen, twenty years that don't need improvement?
It's a, it's a net. And it may just be one year they had a bad year, or they, they just finally it caught up to them, or they just really need to work on how they perform their job. All right. And then the last thing on the expense highlights, our property and casualty coverage has a budgeted increase of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So we continue to see increases across the board with that as well. The expense highlights for the personnel and general fund management services, there are no changes. Court, we have removed two of the bailiff positions because our traffic unit is now assisting during court, so we don't need the bailiffs anymore. Finance, we have added an accountant, too, in order to provide some succession planning within that department. IT, we've added another systems administrator for the digital forensics to assist the police department with where that technology is going. GIS, we've added a CAD and GIS field technician to perform more of our inventory out in the field. And then our HR and risk management department, we've reclassed the administrative assistant to an administrative coordinator because of the job responsibilities increasing there. Also, in general fund, the fire department, we've added an admin lieutenant that is specific to EMS and training. And our police department, we are proposing a reclassification of the accreditation manager to the operations and accreditation manager, and one officer will remain unfunded. Public works, there are no changes. Planning and development, it looks as though we have a new position this fiscal year because of the executive director. We weren't able to fill that position in last year's fiscal year, so we didn't add it, and then the budget, so it'll just look as a new position in FY25. Then economic development, never any changes. And our enterprise funds, our telecom fund, we're adding a telecom installation technician. Again, this is just showing that we are able to expand our fiber network, and so we need some more help in that department. In solid waste, we are getting ready to reopen the recycling center finally, and so we need a crew leader and two recycling center attendants to help with that program. Also, we are reclassing the scale attendants for the same reasons. They have some more job responsibilities and technological qualifications needed, so they need to be moved up. Also, our electric and water wastewater department, the utility services liaison and service workers have been moved from the electric department to water wastewater. Now that we have been on automatic meters, we don't need them to be in the field for electric, so they're really only in the field ninety percent of the time for water wastewater. So we finally have them in the correct department there. Stormwater, we are adding three new positions, and this is actually going to allow us to do more inspections in-house rather than having to contract out. So we're adding a senior environmental technician, a class A equipment operator, and an equipment operator. Our airport has no changes in staffing, neither does the golf course, and then we are unfunding one of the mechanic one positions in the airport. Another expense highlight is our fuel. This year, we are budgeting the same as we did last year, so our regular is budgeted at four-ten per gallon. You can see the highest that we've paid so far this year is three dollars and sixty-three cents, the lowest is two dollars and seventy-seven cents. And diesel, we're budgeting four dollars and ninety cents a gallon. The highest that we paid is four dollars and thirty-three cents, and the lowest is three dollars and sixty-one cents. It seems that that is a good way to sort of save on budget by reducing what we are budgeting. Unfortunately, for every five cents that we change it, it's only about a forty-five thousand dollar change to the budget, and only about eleven thousand of that is in the general fund. So we like to sort of have some cushion there because the market is so volatile, we don't really know what will happen. So we are proposing to leave it the same this year as last year. And then our expense highlights are our general fund. In management services, our total has increased in that department sixteen thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. The commissioner's budget increased five thousand, six seventy-one, and I'll tell you all a little bit more about y'all next. The city managers has increased fifteen thousand, two seventy-three, and this budget is actually myself and two full-time employees. So this is mostly due to insurance, with all of our insurance going up. Um, the two employees that do have insurance have also increased. The communications and PR budget also increased ten thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The staff attorney decreased three thousand, seven hundred and fifty. The city attorney budget increased five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that's due to required legal research software that we have to pay for. Elections has decreased, but there is a budget for elections in the hopes that we will be able to call a splash referendum in the spring. We have to split that cost with the counties. There is money budgeted in there, so we don't have a municipal election this fiscal year. And the municipal court increased three thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars again to insurance costs. The commission expenses are about the same as usual. Muni code is ten thousand dollars. Education and training is budgeted at seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty. The Three Rivers Regional Commission is twenty-four thousand dollars. Your GMA dues are budgeted at eighty-five hundred. Fireworks have gone up a little bit, so they're at sixteen thousand dollars. UGA Griffin is seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. UGA Archway is twenty thousand dollars, and your contingency remains at a hundred thousand dollars. In finance, their expense increased ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. The director increasing four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two. Accounting is the majority of your increase at eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars, and that is because of the new position and the benefits associated with that. Procurement has increased four thousand, ninety dollars. In human resources and risk management, their expense increased twenty-four thousand, sixty-eight dollars. Risk management increased nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. Most of that is due to professional services and supplies of both these departments. And information technology and GIS. Information technology budget increased one hundred and seventy-six thousand, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
I'm in the commission, but.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, my name is for the Three Rivers. What is it exactly that's two of the things for?
Well, they do a few different things. They do a lot of our transportation planning. So Stephanie Wagner, who's the planner with Three Rivers, comes to our transportation meetings. She sends out the, the DRIs, which are development. Regional impacts, maybe. Um, so we know sort of what's coming. We can make comments on that for our region. Um, they provide the transportation funding, which is actually coming up in the planning and development department, uh, budget, mayor.
So each of the ten counties, each government has to pay a percentage of what the operation does, so it's based on your population, uh, generally. So, um, they do the workforce investment program, they do the senior program, um, transportation, and then the planning divisions. You've got four different pillars of the Three Rivers Commission.
But I'm trying to not understand. Why, why doesn't that come out of the business? Why doesn't it come out of?
It just comes out of y'all's budget. It doesn't come out of your contingency. That's in addition to your contingency.
Yeah, why does, why doesn't it come out of this budget? Is that how everybody around the regional state does?
You can, it, it doesn't matter. It's, it's just a general fund expense. I mean, it could, normally when it's something that the city is, is doing, like GMA or National League of Cities, y'all pay for as the governing body, but it can come out of mine. It, it doesn't matter.
Do those things, is that the budget to come out of?
Mm-hmm.
The three, like the Three River, I'm just like the twenty-four thousand dollars, is that where that money come from, when you do national cities stuff?
No, that's different. National League of Cities is a different organization that y'all are a member of. And you'd hope for that.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand why the Three Rivers money come out of this business. I'm not the contingency guy of the budget.
It comes out of your professional services budget? Memberships and dues, because we are a member of.
Three Rivers for.
The, the commission. Well, it's for the city. We can put it in, in my budget. It, it doesn't matter, but the city is paying for it. So it, it comes out of the general fund expense, whether we put it, the commissioners pay for it, or I pay for it, or it, it really doesn't. I think because it's.
Come out of the mission.
It has. It has. I think because what we try and do, if, if it's more than just one thing, like transportation, planning, aging, workforce, it's more of a citywide thing. So we, it could be a mine, it could be in yours. I think either one makes sense. It's just always come out of y'all's, and so that's just where it's been budgeted. Okay. Uh, in information technology, their budget increased a hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and four dollars. Their repair and maintenance services are up seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, and their professional services are also budgeted to increase to eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy. In GIS, their expense has increased eighty-six thousand, four hundred and eight, and almost all of that is associated with the new position. So the wages have increased fifty-one thousand, sixty-nine dollars, and then the cost associated with that new position for benefits. In the police department, their total expense is budgeted to increase four hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. As I mentioned before, they are going to be replacing temperature cars and outfitting sixty-one thousand dollars a piece. Also, at a few meetings ago, you approved the new contract with Axon, which will now have body cameras, dash cameras, and tasers all with one company. The cost for that is coming up fiscal year is three hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. And our inmate custody cost is budgeted the same as last year at a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
How much of the percentage for the house of cameras? And that's what they will be. It's got to be over, you know, the time.
No, they'll be coming next month, Jean, to get everything done. Yes, they will have them. All right. So in the fire department, their total expense has decreased this year, budgeted at eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars of a decrease. Again, they'll be repaving station number three at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. They have budgeted for a crew cab pickup for sixty-nine thousand dollars. Some gear dryers at eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, eight hundred megahertz radios at sixty-two thousand dollars. Their turnout gear is sixty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, and then sixty sets of rescue gear at sixty-six thousand dollars. This is, this is about as bare bones we can get it for the fire department. Unfortunately, if we do not have a splash referendum in the spring, we are going to have to look at how to either probably both redo station number three, and also we're going to have to have a station number four. Um, so you're looking at several million dollars that we'll need to be starting to think about for capital in the fire department. Um, their turnout gear alone this year went up thirty-five percent. So the cost of doing business as a firefighter is really starting to increase, and we are going to have to think about what we're doing in staffing, location, um, for a new station as well in the next year or so. In public works, their total expenses has increased a hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Separating that out by divisions, the director has decreased two thousand, thirty-two dollars. The cemetery has increased a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Facilities budget has increased three hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty-six, and the streets department has decreased two hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and ten. We do have some cemetery projects. We're going to be funding through the cemetery trust fund. Um, ninety thousand dollars for grading the new section, which y'all are familiar with. Eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars has been budgeted to repair brick walls around the cemetery. And there are also office repairs budgeted at twenty-seven thousand dollars. Our facilities budget has increased. Um, the utilities here at One Griffin Center become more expensive every year at twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars of an increase. And then also the inmate detail that we have here, um, the guard salary, we're having to pay nine thousand dollars more for that to keep those inmates. Their total capital expenses this year are down at a hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Streets capital, they're asking for two mowers at fifteen thousand, five hundred each, a paving compaction roller at seventy-nine thousand dollars, and then a stump grinder attachment at ten thousand, eight hundred dollars. The cemetery also needs a mower at fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And the facilities, um, capital, they're asking for a carpet cleaning machine for nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Their, uh, capital in fiscal year 24 was close to five hundred thousand dollars, so they've asked for less capital this year. Continuing in public works, the parks department budget has decreased fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars, while the sign shop has decreased forty-five thousand, two hundred and three. The welcome center, um, again, same thing, building is getting older, so the operational cost is also increasing there at a hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-three. Because we do house the archives in the welcome center, there's an allocation to the archives for that at ninety-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars, which is split between the city and the county at forty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars each. The total budget for the archives is two hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Again, that is split between the city and the county at a hundred and six thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Archives budget in FY24 was one seventy-three, nine eighty-four, so it's an increase of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-six, which is mostly due to the welcome center cost increasing. They are going to have to have a boiler replaced, which is being budgeted at seventy thousand dollars. In development services, their expenses have increased thirty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The money that we paid to Charles Abbott and Associates for building inspections has gone up to two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Last year, we budgeted that at two hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Again, we also budget for our CDBG application fees in the development services department at fifteen thousand dollars. They do not have any capital this year. Um, and the revenue associated with the Charles Abbott inspections is budgeted at four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars compared to four hundred and four thousand last year. But we do still have, um, some revenue that comes in with those costs to Charles Abbott. Our transportation planning is something that, um, we pay for eighty-five thousand dollars to the hundred and twenty thousand in fiscal year 24, so that has gone down. Tax and licensing is pretty much flat. They increased three hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifteen cents this year. Bank fees have increased seven thousand dollars, so we are absorbing the cost of credit cards for our customers. Um, ten thousand dollars was budgeted in full year 24. People are taking advantage of that, though, so we have increased that budget to seventeen thousand dollars. Our economic redevelopment department is budgeted at two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-five, which is almost double from last year. This is where we, um, have assumed the responsibility of land bank property maintenance and having to pay to handle that. Economic development expenses increased thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Storage City Hall is up mostly. Um, it is at ninety-one, ninety-four thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars compared to last year's budget at sixty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine. They're asking to replace some tables, patio furniture, and Christmas items at fifty-five hundred dollars. And then they also have a capital request for a new vehicle at forty-two thousand dollars. We have budgeted rental revenue at twenty thousand dollars this year at seventy-five percent of fiscal year 24. The rental revenue is at eight thousand, but if you'll remember, we did shut the on the old courtroom because of the repairs that need to be made there. So we think that twenty thousand dollars is a conservative estimate for next year. Do they have any questions for women to enterprise fund? I think pulling pictures is my favorite part of budget. All right. So our electric department, we are projecting their revenues to increase two million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Their residential service has increased one million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars, while we're projecting their commercial service to decrease thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-one. Their industrial service revenues are projected to increase five hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and forty-eight. Their PCA, which is their power cost adjustment, and their ECCR, which is their environmental compliance cost recovery, has increased at two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and their all-system sales projected to decrease by fifteen thousand dollars. Delinquent penalties, um, we're projecting an increase of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. And if you'll remember, for a while, we did have three third-party sales contracts. There's only one that is still remaining, which is Robert Sale, Alabama, at seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars for this fiscal year. The electric department expenses increased as well, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. In fiscal year 24, they were expected to increase from twenty-three at two million, four hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and twenty. Again, a lot of their, their normal capital budgeted amounts, line maintenance and improvements at four hundred thousand, system protection at one fifty, new customer construction at three hundred thousand, LED conversion and streetlights for two hundred thousand, security lighting at a hundred thousand. security lighting at a hundred thousand, automated switching at a hundred thousand, two four-by-four pickup trucks at a hundred and thirty thousand, two eighteen. And then a bucket truck is needed, which is projected at a hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The expense from FY twenty-four that was most increased was, was our purchase power cost because of Vogel coming on. So we don't see quite the increase this year because we've already seen that last year. In addition, our electric total capital is one million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and three, which is about the same as fiscal year twenty-four at one point, seven eight million. Their general fund transfer has increased this year. It is ten million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, which is sixteen point zero four percent of their revenue. So this is the highest we've ever taken from the electric um fund to transfer into general fund. Last year's was nine million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, fifteen dollars, which is what was a fifteen point zero five percent transfer. FY twenty-three's transfer was fifteen point five percent. So we're, in my opinion, not moving in the right direction. We need to figure out how the general fund is going to be able to not have to depend on this transfer, at least not at sixteen percent for much longer. The reserved earnings, though, still look good at two million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two. In FY twenty-four, the reserve earnings were one point one six million. In the wastewater department, their revenue is projected to increase forty thousand, eight hundred and three dollars with expenses also increasing five hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. The Shoal Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant has a budget that has decreased by a hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars while Potato Creek is up sixty-one thousand, one hundred and three. Cabin Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant is projected to have a decreased in budgeted expenses of forty-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars. And Blanton Mill is also projected to decrease fourteen thousand, five hundred and five. The lab's budget, though, is up almost a hundred thousand dollars, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, while the lift station's budget is down ten thousand, forty-seven dollars. Sledge Management, their projected expenses are up twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety. And wastewater collections are down over two million dollars. If you will remember, last year, we budgeted two million dollars for infrastructure improvements, which we have been able to make some of those. But right now, we are concentrating on engineering and construction plans, as you know, with Tater Creek and Shoal Creek both needing some serious uh upgrades to the INI situations there. We're budgeting instead for um engineering and construction and then we'll come back with some infrastructure improvements after that. Their total wastewater capital this year is low at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, which is renewals and extensions always budgeted at one fifty and then an automatic sprinkler at ten thousand dollars. In the water department, their revenue is projected to increase forty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars with residential increasing twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety. Commercial is projected to decrease at one fifty-eight, one ninety-four. And the big hit to us is our industrial and institutional is expected to decrease off of almost half a million dollars and that is due to eighteen eighty-eight mills um shutting down or our biggest industrial institutional customers. Almost a half a million dollar hit to our revenue there. Our wholesale, which does not include spalding, decreased two hundred and seventy-four thousand, two oh five. Spalding's has actually increased six hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Also, in the water department, their expenses have decreased one million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Breaking that out by divisions, the director's budget has decreased two thousand, ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. The deputy director has decreased two thousand, thirty-eight. You'll remember, we had separated water and wastewater out into operations managers with Mr. Milton's uh retirement. We did bring those back into a deputy director with Mr. Clark and so that budget is back as one. Still Branch has decreased one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-five, while Harry Simmons has increased one hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. Our water distribution budget has decreased thirty-three thousand, sixty-two. Also, in water, they have a small capital request this year, two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Fourteen to a meter, that eighty-four thousand dollars in renewals and extensions at a hundred thousand dollars. Their capital in fiscal year twenty-four was a hundred and seven thousand dollars, so a little bit higher this year. Also in water wastewater, the thing that we always have to look at this time of year is our debt service. What does that look like for us right now? Um, in fiscal year twenty-five, our debt service is eight million, ninety-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, which is about a million dollars worth paid last year in principal and interest. I won't read all of these numbers to you, but you can see reservoir bonds, Potato Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant G balloon, Cabin Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant G balloon, Shoal Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant G balloon. Hit continue. Water pump station G balloon, Steel Branch Generator G balloon, Fledge Facilities G balloon, dam rehab G balloon number one. And then, of course, that project went so far above budget that we had to have a second loan. So the dam rehab G balloon two. All of that totals over eight million dollars in this fiscal year that we will be repaying in debt. With, of course, the need for an expansion of Shoal Creek and a complete overhaul on Harry Simmons. So you're looking at potentially thirty to fifty million dollars more that is needed for debt and water wastewater. So their expenses. Their total water capital is two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Their total wastewater capital is a hundred and sixty thousand. So their total capital is three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Their transfer this year has increased drastically, two million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Five hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-five is for CDBG, two point four one two is for the general fund. What we have done this year in order to balance this budget is take the one point eight million the water wastewater have been transferring since we think two thousand, well, twenty thirteen. Um, and actually looked at what that one point eight million will be worth now. It's a thirty-four percent increase at two point four one two. Um, so that's almost, that's six hundred and twelve thousand dollars more than they have them transferring. It leaves them with reserve funds at two million, fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which is about seven hundred thousand more than that left them with last year. Do you may have any questions about either one of those? In stormwater, we're projecting our revenue to decrease sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars with expenses increasing one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-six. The only capital request that stormwater has, they wrote tractor. Um, they also have some debt at three hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred dollars in principal and interest for G balloon. Their restricted earnings this year, as you'll remember by law, um, stormwater cannot be transferred into the general fund. It has to remain in its own separate fund. They have restricted five thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So a very slim profit margin this year. Last year, it was budgeted at one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three. In solid waste, the good news is our revenues are projected to increase at six hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. Residential collections, though, are, have been projected to decrease at three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. That is because due to our current collections, at seventy-five percent of the year, we're only at sixty-six percent of the budget. So we can't budget like we did before because we're not meeting that budget. Commercial collections have increased twenty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Yard waste collections have increased thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty. Transfer station is the same way. Um, at seventy-five percent of the year, they have only met sixty-four percent of their budget. So we have projected a decrease in that revenue as well of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. However, our roll-off fees and our landfill fees are both projected to increase, roll-off by a hundred and fifteen thousand, fifty-eight dollars and landfill by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We are also making a educated guess on recycling fees. Um, we think that that revenue can bring in about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but Mr. NS is working through some contract negotiations with several different companies now to figure out exactly what the best um recycling program will be for us. The unfortunate thing is that solid waste is an expensive business. So although their revenue has increased six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, their expenses are projected to increase over a million. Um, and fiscal year twenty-four, their expenses were projected to increase nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. The director uh budget has actually decreased because the swing driver that we kept there to be used on residential or commercial or whatever routes were needed has really been used commercially. So we just moved it to the commercial department. Uh, residential expenses have increased sixty-six thousand, four hundred and six dollars. Commercials are projected to increase one hundred and three thousand, four hundred and forty-seven. The transfer station uh budgeted expenses are projected to increase two hundred and fourteen thousand, forty-seven dollars. And the CND landfill is expected to increase six hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars. The closed landfill budget is up twenty-eight thousand dollars due to more of our methane testing. And then yard waste expenses have also increased thirty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-one. The total capital request in solid waste uh are three different things, a fifty-three foot trailer at a hundred thousand dollars, the transfer station, a fuel truck. A hundred and thirty-four thousand and then the refailer for our recycling program at three hundred and sixty-five thousand, which totals five hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars capital. We did receive the EPD grant, uh, so we have budgeted that money to offset the baler cost as well. In the airports, the total operating revenue for the airport for fiscal year twenty-five is five hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars, which does not include transfers from the general fund or Spalding County. Spalding County recognizes operations at one hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars plus the debt service of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seventy-five dollars. You'll remember, when we first took out bonds for the new airport, the county was not able to pay uh their portion. And so they are continuing to pay us back at thirty-one thousand, twenty-five for prior years. And then they have caught up and are paying the three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, fifty dollars for fiscal year twenty-five. The transfer from the general fund that the city will make to the airport is four hundred and eighty-one thousand, ten dollars. Um, and FY twenty-four was four, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven seventy and FY twenty-three, four hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four. Also, the airport expenses are about flat, one million, seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars compared to one million, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two in FY twenty-four. Our fuel for resale is budgeted at two ninety-one, four fifty. Um, and FY twenty-four was budgeted at three twelve, eight ten. So although that expense has gone down, that means potential revenue has also gone down. You can see the split between add gas and jet A fuel. And then, of course, just to note that our forty-seven million dollars that we have received in the state's budget will be coming as we are able to make more progress at the new airport. In telecom, their total revenue is one million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one, which is a projected increase of over a hundred thousand dollars compared to fiscal year twenty-four. In fiscal year twenty-four, it was projected to go up sixty-five thousand from fiscal year twenty-three. So every year, they are making more money, which is a great sign. Um, six hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and twenty-one of that will come from fiber leases and four hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-one is expected from internal service charges. Their total expenses, though, have also increased one million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Their total expense, which is an increase of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seventy-six from fiscal year twenty-four. Their salaries have increased fifty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the new install tech. And then also they're having another hundred thousand dollars budgeted for fabric work extension.
Question?
Yes.
Is um, is Spalding, do we still provide air and air service in Spalding County this term? Okay. They start getting a sweetheart deal from us, right?
Alright. Moving along to the golf course, their operating revenue has increased thirty-one point four percent, which is seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars compared to thousand and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred in fiscal year twenty-four. Their expenses are up ninety thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, most of which is capital requests, a turf collection system at fifteen thousand, a work cart at thirty-six thousand. They need to replace some stairs at ninety-three hundred dollars and they also need to replace their dumpster enclosures at sixty-five hundred. So they do still require a transfer from the general fund to five hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. But that is going down. Last year's was five hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and sixteen. Motor pool, another internal service fund, our revenue is projected there, one million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty, which is a slight increase from fiscal year twenty-four, which was budgeted at one million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-five. Their expenses have gone down a little as well at one million, five hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and fifty-three compared to fiscal year twenty-four, one million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and nineteen. They did have a capital request this year. Unfortunately, we weren't able to fund it at this time. Um, so we may have to come back and look at a service truck with them, but that is not budgeted uh right now. The transfer required from the general fund is two hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three. Almost a over three hundred thousand dollar um decrease from fiscal year twenty-four, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, three oh four. Our Main Street program has a budget, total budget this year of two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars, which is an increase from fiscal year twenty-four, which was budgeted at two hundred and eight thousand, one thirty-three. The allocation from economic development has increased to ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and then a hundred and forty-four thousand and eight hundred and twenty dollars of that budget is specific to Main Street. They do have some revenue budgeted this year, twenty-six thousand, six hundred dollars because sixteen thousand has already been given from GSPTA, ten thousand for advertising and sixty-six hundred for sponsorship. And then we do have a ten thousand dollar corporate sponsor of Second Saturday. So we have budgeted that revenue to offset some of that cost. Our downtown development authority budget has increased as well at five hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-one compared to three hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three in fiscal year twenty-four. Again, they have a nine-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six economic development allocation. And then four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-five is specific to DDA. They have requested, again, capital for four hundred thousand dollars to purchase a building, rehab and resale, and all of that would come from TAD one. Our hotel motel tax revenue, we have budgeted a slight increase this year at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars compared to a hundred and thirty-two thousand last year. You can see the cost split for historic city hall. This is all that state statute receives twenty-eight thousand, one twenty-five. GSPTA, as our destination marketing organization, receives sixty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then the general fund will receive fifty-six thousand, two fifty. Special revenue fund, CDBG, our revenue and expenses, one point five eight one nine four five million. So a million of that will come from grants if we do receive a CDBG grant. And our local match will be coming from water wastewater. Our court tech revenue fund, we budget twenty-five thousand dollars every year. Fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty of that will cover the expenses associated with court technology and then eight thousand, one hundred and thirty will be reserved if something is needed. And then T-SLOSS revenue has budgeted at three million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, though, will be a general fund transfer for L-MIG. So the total expenses for T-SLOSS are four million, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. So the budget this year uh came together better than I thought it would. Um, but we have made a few pretty big changes that I wanted to make sure that you are aware of. We have never increased our electric transfer past fifteen point nine something percent, now over sixteen. We have never increased our water wastewater transfer, always been one point eight and it is now two point four one two. So we are having to sort of scrounge at the bottom of the barrel to make this budget balance. And this is not taking into account anything that we will have to do for salaries. So um, I don't know what will happen next year. Um, but this is, this is not an avenue that I think that we need to continue to pursue. I think we need to look at getting back to our transfers being flat. Um, we do not have anything that prohibits us from doing this as far as any kind of ordinance or statute. Um, so that is my recommendation on how to balance the budget. But again, I think that come September and October, we're already talking with our consultants that also um helped the county with their salary study as to what that's going to look like. And so we're going to have to come back and, and do something closer to um September or October. But with that, are there any questions? We lose the majority of our employees in the first six months. So if we can get them to stay and actually receive the benefits of having a performance increase based on, or pay increase based on their performance, and I think it is helpful. Um, I've heard throughout the city, just talking to different employees, some like it and some don't. Um, I think that they sometimes have an under, a misunderstanding as to why certain things are judged. For example, in the employee advisory um committee meeting a couple of weeks ago and then, and a few conversations since then, most of them think that participation um is part of their evaluation because we need to help with events. Um, participation is part of the evaluation because I think that it makes them step out of their comfort zone and learn what other departments do. And so it makes them more focused on the city as a community rather than their job at a desk. Um, and so when you get that kind of information out, I do think that it helps. Um, but you're always going to have a few that just say that they're either say that they're either too subjective, they're not fair. Um we have almost every year tweaked it to make it less subjective, more just this is what you have to have to get a two, three, or four. Um we don't want anybody to get a one. I can, I can say that for sure. I don't want anybody to get a needs improvement. Um but I also want to reward those that are going above and beyond, and if somebody needs help in understanding the way to make more money is to do a better job, then I don't have a problem with that. Um and we, like we've said, we've sort of seen that where people have improved their performance because they want to to have a raise. So I I think it's helpful and actually attracting. I'm not sure that many people know that we do it. Um but once we can get them here and get them past that year, I do think that it helps their retention. It's a lot of work. I think so. Yeah, so we don't, we won't actually have to do a whole new study. We used Evergreen as our consultants because of of a promise that they made that if we are to answer surveys of others when they are doing salary surveys, that they would give us the information back. So we're not gonna have them come in and do a whole different study, but they're gonna provide us the information that they just use to do the counties, and that way we can sort of see where we are. We won't have to pay for it. There's nothing in this, there's the two percent budgeted, which is about a five hundred and well, five hundred and twenty-four thousand budgeted for this two percent. So whatever comes back and says that your minimum salaries are now below where they need to be, we'll have to look at how we get back up to minimum, and then if we're gonna do any kind of tenure, or sort of like we did last time with the hybrid. Total, I think, was three million dollars. Three point zero something. And they did somewhat of a hybrid like we did, and and remember, this is them catching up to ours from a couple of years ago. They've just now been able to do this. Um but they have, they have a three million dollar budget that um for those raises. Theirs was bringing up to minimum, and then they also gave seniority. So if you were a thirty-year employee, you got certain credit for however long you have been in that position, plus a fourth of the credit for however long you have been at the county. So some people are getting big raises, some people are just being brought up to minimum. Um but I think all but ten, they said, or having a raise. Well, they did, they did. I mean, it's two years later, so the cost of living has gone up. So the the best example I'd know off the top of my head, our starting police officer is at fifty-four thousand. So they looked at that, and then two years later, they're now gonna start their deputies at fifty-eight, something, close to fifty-nine. So that that additional five thousand dollars, just that ten percent, that everything has gone up. So, yeah. We're gonna come back in in probably August or September and have to talk about that. Yep. Sooner rather than later, because otherwise retention is, I don't know, we do so much. Yes, sir. It just depends. I mean, you you might go through a file and see several different written warnings or several different just notes to file that, you know, I talked so-and-so again this morning about whatever the case may be. Um sometimes it's that they're on a performance improvement plan, and so they can't have a raise because they've they've gotten in enough trouble that they're on probation again. Um it's really hard to answer across the board. I would think that most people know that whether, and it, and and they're not necessarily missing out on two percent. It, we we try and reward the highest performers with the highest percentage. So I think last year, that ended up being four, three and a half, and then it went down from three to two based on, and then what the percentages were. But we really don't know until we get all the scores back because we still have to stick within that that budget.
Do you have a question? We're very appreciative of your staff and all its efforts.
They did a great job.
Did a great job. Very innovative in terms of looking at good revenue against it, it seems a little outside the box, but isn't necessarily based on where we're at.
So telecom is using that for storage. They're working on demolishing one of those structures, that being rehabbing that right now. Um you know, that was purchased from our understanding to do a public works and utilities building. Um I don't think there's enough space for the amount of equipment and people that they have to put public works, water, wastewater, stormwater all over there. Um so that is something that we're gonna have to talk about to figure out what what we what we wanna do. But it, we have some plans, but I just don't know that they were realistically drafted.
Okay. To move into item two, service access session for CTA. Fifty fourteen to one for the purpose of consulting a meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending, pending and potential litigation, settlement claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved due to CTA section fifteen fourteen three B two for the purpose of discussing or delivering upon the appointments, employment conversation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer or employee. Ms. Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray, all in favor, please join us. Thank you, staff, for your hard work. Appreciate everything you do for. We have motion to adjourn. Ms. Ward with a motion, second by Mr. Wright, all in favor, say aye.